Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do have a proclamation to read. Whereas Whitney Waythen has been awarded the 2021 Young Professional Award from the Oklahoma Recreation and Parks Society, and whereas Whitney Waythen has served this organization with enthusiasm and hard work, he is given generously of his time, effort, and most notably by consulting and working with his peers. And whereas Whitney Waythen plays an important role in the Moore community, the Parks and Recreation Department, and contributes of his time to work with city departments and city programs. And whereas Whitney Waythen is well-respected in the community and workplace by both his peers, management, who are proud to call him friend, he sincerely shares and works with his coworkers. And now therefore, I, Mark Ham, the Vice Mayor, on behalf of our Mayor Glenn Lewis of the City of Moore, do hereby present this proclamation to Whitney Waythen. On behalf of the City Council, myself, we extend to you our congratulations, sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance, professionalism, and dedication, your important role to the City of Moore's citizens. Approved, signed and approved this seventh day of June 2021. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's always good to get to recognize people for going above and beyond, and we really do appreciate what you do for our city. Now to, I guess to bring it down a notch to our consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May 17, 2021. Receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held April 13, 2021. Approve the reemployment of Jeff Arvin, Charles Payne, and Robert Washington to the Parks Board for three-year terms. Accept a 15-foot roadway and utility easement from the First Indian Baptist Church of Moore, located in the southwest quarter of Section 25, Township 10, Rural 3 West, being south of Southwest 19th Street and west of Broadway Avenue. Item E is accept a 20-foot utility easement from First United Bank and Trust Company, located in the northwest corner of Section 23, Township 10, Rural 3, being south of Southwest 4th Street and east of Telephone Road. Approve a memorandum of agreement for FY 2122 with the Oklahoma Water Resource Board and the U.S. Geological Survey for stream gauging and authorize payment in the amount of $5,900. Item G, approve renewal of agreement for FY 2122 with Signal System Management, Inc., in the amount of $17,520 to maintain communications and to monitor traffic signal operations at various intersections within the city. Item H, approve a one-year extension of Public Works Maintenance Contract with Silver Star Construction Company. Item I, consider renewal of a contract with Apollo Building Systems, Inc., for construction and management services beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022. Item J is approve renewal of inter-local agreement with the Board of County Commissioners for Cleveland County for grading drainage and hard surface surfacing of certain streets within the city. Item K is approve a contract with Stan Drake for project services related to the City of Moore's streets and drainage. Item L, approve an amendment to the agreement with aging services approved in April 2020 to provide home-delivered meals to senior residents funded with Round 1 of Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 funds. Item N, approve or M, approve an amendment to the agreement with aging services approved November 2020 to provide home-delivered meals to senior residents funded with Round 2 of Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 funds. Item N is approve an amendment to the agreement with the Multifare Housing Council to provide fair housing services for more residents funded with Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 funds. Item O, declare a 2010 X-Mark. The VIN number is Lincoln Zebra Adam 27 King Charles 604. A 2006 Snapper, the VIN is 200273070. A 2013 Bobcat, the VIN number of 94250401128. A 2013 Bobcat, VIN number is 94250401129. And a 2000 Toro 328D, VIN number 30626-230000789. Mowers for the Parks and Recreation Department as surplus. Item P is declare a 2002 F Ford 250, the VIN number 1 Frank Tom Nora Frank 20 Lincoln 32 Edward Boy 83605. Fleet Maintenance Unit Number 02831. And a 2006 Ford F-150, VIN number 1 Frank Tom Robert X-Ray 12 William 86 Nora Adam 24813. Code enforcement unit number 05423 as surplus. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $5,412,893.18. Are there any questions? We just need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Bring us to item three. Consider approval of the FY 2021-2022 annual budget and adoption resolution number 99221.
Vice Mayor and Council, we held a public meeting on May 17. The budget was posted on our website the previous week, so there was plenty of time for people to review the proposed budget. There were no comments at the public meeting, nor have I received any calls about the budget. The total city budget, the proposed total city budget is $131.5 million. This is a $24 million increase over the fiscal year 21 budget. The increases are mainly due to the geo-bond projects and the Costco incentive. We have budgeted a 2% increase in sales tax for fiscal year 22. The budget includes 1.4% COLA for non-union employees and merit increases for all eligible employees. There are 13 new positions in this budget, 12 are in public safety and one in animal control. This budget also calls for an increase in commercial sanitation rates between $5 and $40 per month. This is the first increase since 2010. And the budget contains $26 million for capital outlay, which consists of geo-bond projects, renovating the Public Works Facility, expanding the equipment storage area at Buck Thomas Park, and other vehicles and equipment. Had numerous discussions over the last few months with council members and staff. Happy to answer any questions, recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second, and I just have one comment, and that's just about the expenditures for the RTA. And I hope that the RTA will show some considerable, given considerable thought to how this is going to be funded before the City of Moore continues to invest more money. I know that right now the state legislator has limited it to sales tax. And that, you know, before we continue to put more money in that, we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it, especially if the study is $4 to $8 million. So, we've had a motion and a second, would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. We have a new budget, good. Item four is consider the preliminary plat of the Oak Ridge Crossing North, located in the southwest quarter of Section 27, Township 10, north, Rural 3 West, being north of Southwest 34th Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue. Application by TWD Oklahoma Properties LLC, Tom Turner. The Planning Commission recommended approval, eight to zero, and this is in Ward 3.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located north of Southwest 34th Street on the east side of Santa Fe Avenue. It is currently vacant. The site is located across the street from Oak Ridge Elementary School and is bounded to the east and north by the existing Blue Stem Ridge addition, which this property was zoned C3 with the development of the Blue Stem Ridge addition back in the early 2000s. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with three commercial lots. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. The property will be accessed from South Santa Fe Avenue and Southwest 34th Street. The access will be limited to shared access drives. Curb cuts to these arterial streets will be minimized and reviewed with the final plat. There is no FEMA flood plane located on the site. The developer is proposing a common detention pond for the site at the northeast corner of the property to discharge into the existing storm sewer for the Blue Stem Ridge addition. The Envision More 2040 Plan calls for this location to be neighborhood commercial. The plan describes neighborhood commercial as a commercial center of neighborhood significance, includes a mix of office, retail, and service uses. Due to the proposed commercial nature of this application, staff believes that it is in compliance with the intent of the Envision More 2040 Plan and does meet the goals and policies of the plan. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, what's the plan for getting the water from the retention pond into the neighborhood?
So, the, this, the Blue Stem Ridge Storm Sewer connects up with the Oak Ridge Storm Sewer. And as we know, Oak Ridge had some significant flooding concerns. So, the goal is to not overburden that storm sewer with additional water.
That's a lot of land.
Yes. So, what we have been discussing with the applicant's engineer is to design the detention pond for a 500-year storm instead of the 100-year storm. Mieschek and Associates is reviewing these storm sewer plans to make sure that it works with the existing storm sewer that's in place. And to make a long story short, they'll just have to detain as much water as is needed to slowly release into the storm sewer to make sure that they don't overburden it and cause a backup into Oak Ridge.
Yeah, because that's, I mean, that's at the absolute worst point where that water's at, to be able to get out anywhere else, so.
Yes.
As far as being in that northeast corner, so. Do we have any idea what the intent is commercially?
The first lot that they will be developing is for a daycare.
Okay, they're in Lot 1?
Yes, called a Goddard School. So, we believe that that'll fit in well with the area, and that will kick-start the development with future uses to be seen.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Should call the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item five, consider rezoning application number RZ-1007, located in the southwest quarter of Section 12, Township 10, Rural 3 West, being north of Northeast 12th Street and east of Eastern Avenue from R3 PUD, general residential district planned unit development, to amend the existing R-3 planned unit development with revised layout to include a clubhouse and approve ordinance number 97321. Application is by Edifc Care de Most Multis, LLC, Jason Thompson. The Planning Commission recommended approval, six to two, and this is in Ward 2.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located north of Northeast 12th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. It was zoned in 2009 to R3 as a PUD to allow for the expansion of Hayden's Landing. At that time, 48 units were being proposed, but no stormwater detention and very limited site amenities. Since that time, the owner has renovated the existing apartments, but no new apartments were constructed. This application seeks to update the approved PUD with modern amenities. It would include a community building, a fitness facility, gated dog park, 16 one-car garages, and 59 trees. The comprehensive plan designates the site as community commercial. That's a mix of commercial and residential uses. And because of the increase of usable open space, the application is in compliance with the plan. And due to the quality amenities that are being provided, staff recommends approval of this amendment to the approved PUD number 841. At the Planning Commission meeting, there were no citizens present to speak against this item. The discussion with the Planning Commission focused primarily around the proposed trash compactor, which is located at the north, the north part of the property. We did receive a protest letters, letter from neighboring property owners, which I believe you all received. There is some concerns about the property that is actually owned by the applicant and the boundary of the legal description. There is also a concern that was given about the condition of the existing apartments. City staff has gone and did a brief survey of the existing apartments. Although we didn't find anything that would necessitate an exterior property maintenance, there are some minor electrical issues that need to be fixed if they can be. The, there are a lot of grandfathered-in elements with their HVAC units, simply because they are so old, and sometimes parts can't be get, can't be acquired for the repairs. And I need to clarify in the, in the letter that was given that the existing apartments were never part of a PUD. The existing apartments were approved many years ago, and.
I was just going to ask you, what, what's the model of that apartment complex? Do you know how old it is?
I don't know how old it is, but it was here in existence long before.
Seventies, early seventies at least.
Yeah. So, those existing apartments were never part of a PUD. The existing property that's vacant today, that's under consideration, has been approved for apartments as a PUD in the past. So, what we're asking now is simply to amend the PUD design statement to allow these modern amenities and new layout that's being proposed.
So, if we don't approve this, they could still develop under the old PUD, is that correct, the 2009?
Yes. We would really need to speak with the, the developer, because the original PUD did not include any detention. And I think that that's something that's important.
Right.
And that we would need to come to some sort of agreement about.
Is that what the center of the apartments is?
Yes, so, I belatedly noticed that the PUD design statement was not included in the packet. So, I made a copy for you all. There is a page towards the end that gives a layout. There is a retention pond shown in the middle of the new apartments. So, that would be a pond that has a certain water level all the time, a retention pond. And it would also serve as detention, yes.
Does that? Phrase my words properly here. Does that pose any kind of a safety issue for an apartment complex that might have lots of kids?
There's many apartment complexes that have these retention ponds around. Like, the Greens has a couple of retention ponds.
Around, but in the middle of.
But not in the middle of the complex, right?
Right, it's something that would, I would assume, be gated. And we don't know the depth of the water as of yet.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the council right now? Well, there were a couple of people that signed up to speak on this item. Jason Thompson, if you'll come on up here. And if you would, just before you speak, just give your name and address again for the record.
Yeah. I'm Jason Thompson. I represent the property ownership group for what we're speaking about. My address is 1807 Summer Haven Way in Edmund. As was just said, these are two separate issues. The complaint that was put down is talking about the existing property. The PUD that was presented to the city has to do with the new development. Now, we did include in that PUD that we will be adding a new pool that will be a resort-style pool, and we will also be putting a fitness center and a dog park in the existing courtyard of the existing property. Now, the claims of, you know, the property maintenance and so forth that are in that complaint, when we redevelop this property that's next door, we plan to mirror the appearance of the exterior of the property with the pre-existing property. So, we will reskin all the stone with sticky stone that matches the new property. We will repaint and fix any fascia or soffit issues that are going on. We've been holding off on that because we didn't want to improve the old property and then have the new property be dated during a different period. You know, colors wouldn't match, stone wouldn't match. So, we didn't, we didn't put that in the PUD, but we have plans to do that. The compactor issue that actually came up, the reason we're putting a compactor in is because the Moore Fire Department has come to us several times and talked about our existing dumpsters in the property. You know, at the time this was built in the mid-seventies, fire codes were much different. And so, the area that you have to drive around the existing complex is the only place we have to put dumpsters. And the City of Moore Fire Department has been gracious enough to work with us because we've told them that we've got our PUD approved and that we plan on putting this compactor in to centrally locate all the trash to get those dumpsters out of the way in the existing community. So, that's, that's one item that I did hear her mention that we are going to solve. As far as the existing complaint that has been filed by the adjacent property owner, they're two separate matters. They're claiming some adverse possession claims, and really, I see those as two separate things. It has nothing to do with this meeting, it has to do with a civil suit between us and that other property owner. You know, if that case is won by us, obviously it won't affect this. If it's not won by us, we'll just amend our plans to build. So, I don't know how much information you guys were given in your complaint, but I think there was a copy of the complaint included. Is there any questions I can answer?
What kind of renovations have you done? I know there's a big sign on it that says newly remodeled, and I couldn't tell any remodel from the, from the exterior when I drove through, so what have you done on the interior?
In 2010 and 2011, we spent about $2 million on that complex. It was owned by the same ownership group since it was almost built. And so, we took it from complete, just, I mean, there was, you could see sunlight through the roofs in the apartment. So, all the interiors of the apartments were renovated, but it's been 10 years ago. The exterior was renovated as far as paint and soffits and fascias and siding. We put all new stairwells in at that time, and we did do landscaping on the interior. Since then, we have taken the units one by one and completely renovated them again and installed washer and dryers, have gone in and put new cabinets, new countertops, and, you know, done extensive renovations on the interior. So, we have, again, we have plans that when we construct the new buildings, we will reskin the outside of the existing apartments.
Will that be done pretty quickly after?
It'll be done all at the same time, because I'll have scale there, so I'll have all my contractors, and it's worked in our construction budget. You know, we clearly don't want to build a brand-new apartment complex and have something that looks like it's, you know, 50 years old next door. That's not successful for anybody, so.
Will there be some landscaping done on the old complex as well?
In places where we can do landscaping, yeah. We've got some erosion problems, and we've resodded several times, done some retaining walls. But we don't want to start tearing that place apart until we have full-blown construction going.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
And the other gentleman that signed up was Kale, Mr. Kale Matty? If you'll come on up and again, just state your name and address.
Thank you, my name is Kale Matty, and I'm an attorney. I represent Chad and Janice Wise, who are property owners to the west of the proposed PUD. The, and my address is 2434 North Janeway, Suite A, Moore, Oklahoma 73160. And the address for the other owners, what is y'all's address? 1332 Northeastern Avenue. And, and my apologies to the council for the initial confusion on this matter. A lot of the confusion has come about because this PUD has been sold as a new PUD with all of the types of amenities that your city code requires. Code Section 12412 requires that the PUD shall include amenities not normally considered part of a residential development without the use of the PUD. And so, what that means is other types of amenities, such as signage, such as detention ponds, such as mailboxes, those types of things are typically required with many different subdivisions, regardless of whether or not they are a PUD in character. With respect to a PUD, you're looking for the types of amenities that are going to go above and beyond the minimal types of amenities referenced in that particular section. So, what has been used to sell this PUD is a new pool, a dog park, as well as a fitness facility. The problem is, is that these new amenities are not actually part of the PUD itself as required by the code. The code actually states that the PUD shall include. The problem is, is you have a neighboring property owner who is not bound by this PUD. It's been made clear to us today that they're two separate issues. And so, you've got a PUD that's being sold on nice, new, state-of-the-art amenities. However, there's no binding obligation for the neighboring property owner to include these amenities. Now, typically, you might cure this with perhaps a reciprocal easement agreement, or perhaps a cost-sharing agreement between the two property owners. And more importantly, the two property owners would share in the application. So, if there's no binding legal obligation for the existing apartment complex to assent or provide these amenities, you don't really have any amenities for the new PUD other than a detention pond. You've got a new sign, but that sign is going to go in the existing apartment project. You've got indoor mailboxes, but you still have to go through the elements to get to the mailboxes. It's not like you're putting mailboxes on someone's patio where they don't have to step outside. And so, the issue becomes, well, if they were to cure this with some sort of reciprocal easement agreement, some sort of cost-sharing agreement, you still run into the issue of whether or not you're improving the quality of life for the community of the PUD. Is walking over into a neighboring apartment complex that is not bound by the PUD that you're being asked to pass today, is that necessarily bringing about the type of quality of life for the new residents or the current residents? The current facility does not have landscaping up and down the drives. It does not have any ways of protecting vehicles from running or bumping into air conditioning units. It has sidewalks into the main part of the open area that are blocked off by cars. That will remain. The residents of the new PUD will have to walk through a parking lot where cars frequently block access sidewalks, and they'll have to traverse through mud to get to these new amenities. Now, speaking of the parking, one of the issues that we're concerned about individually is the issue, the current apartment complex, residents push through a fence, they walk through the field to access Eastern Avenue. Now, up in the north, the northwest corner where my client's land is located, assuming we were to fail on the adverse possession lawsuit, and assuming the council were to approve it, we're likely going to be dealing with residents all along that western side of the new PUD who have no parking whatsoever. They're going to be stuck walking around either the north part of the com, new complex or around the south side of the new complex to get to the new access drive on the bottom. For people up in the northeast corner, the question and the temptation is still going to be, can we push through a fence and still access Eastern Avenue more quickly than the means that have been provided to us? So, I, I would ask for the council to consider the issue at hand because it's, in essence, it's an end run. By keeping the two properties separate and by not including the existing apartment complex as part of a new PUD, they can avoid any legally binding obligation to upgrade. It's one thing to stand up in front of the council and say, oh, yeah, it's going to take place. It's going to happen. But there is nothing in writing confirming or obligating the current owner to. But there is nothing in writing confirming or obligating the current owner to do that. The current owner, Hayden's Landing, which owns the apartment complex, is not part of this PUD. They're simply not obligated. They weren't obligated to put in a new pool when that was approved in 2009. Rather, the pool was removed in 2010 and hasn't been installed since. 10 years have gone by without any type of pool for the residents of the existing apartment complex. And so, for those reasons and the reasons put down in the report, I would ask for the council to reject the application. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Okay, Elizabeth, I think, we do have a question for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the amenities that he's put in here, the pool and that sort of thing, is that true that we, that's not legally binding, like that, if he, if he never does it, the city of Moore has no recourse?
Well, what would happen is whenever they turn in a building permit application for a new, the new apartment project, we would go back through the PUD design statement. We would go back through the staff reports. We even go back through the minutes of the plant, of the city council meeting to determine what were all the amenities that were said that they would put in. And we would make sure that each of those amenities are installed. It might be a phased plan. It might be all at once. It depends on how they pull their building permits. But yes, we would make sure that they happen.
Are the two properties owned by the same people or not?
My understanding is that they are. The gentleman who was just up here.
Okay, they're owned by the same? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Sure. Come round back, come back up.
I would just add that a search of the land records indicates that Hayden's Landing LLC is the owner of the apartment complex, and that, that goes to part of the confusion on our objection letters. We originally stated that we had sued that group, but we have not. We've sued the current applicant tonight. There are two separate and distinct owners. There is nothing keeping, furthermore, there's nothing keeping the owner of Hayden's Landing Apartment Complex or assuming it even is under the same ownership, there's nothing keeping them from selling that location to a new buyer who does not necessarily have to approve any of the, the PUD requirements passed here tonight.
Yes, Jason, if you wanted to say something?
I just want to clarify one thing. Before a building permit is issued, they would be required to plat the property. At that time, the two lots could be joined together into one plat, but we would require this property to be platted before we would issue a building permit.
Okay.
So, I will give you a very short education in how lending works in multifamily. I can't have that land in the same name as the apartments because they have to be single asset LLCs, okay? I do own the land, and I own the apartment complex. Just to tell you guys, I'd be a fool to build, you know, to spend $5 million and build brand-new apartments and leave the apartments untouched, to not put a pool in, to not put a dog park in. And as she stated, it's part of the PUD. So, I am legally obligated to do it. And I, you know, I have no problem it being, you know, required by the city council that, you know, what I'm stating in this meeting as far as repairing the exterior issues, putting a pool in, putting a fitness center in, additional landscaping, because we want these communities to become one once we are finished. So, talking about tramping through the other apartment complex, there will be sidewalks provided because the whole perimeter of the complex will be fenced. We plan to shut off the entrance and exits from 12th Street so we can funnel all of the traffic through the west entrance, which, which is what comes off Eastern. Now, there will be Knox boxes for the fire departments to access 12th Street, but we are trying to have a grand entrance because we own that road right there that comes on to Eastern and also comes on to 12th Street. And so, we plan to make that Hayden's Landing Drive, and you will enter in through that part, and there will be sidewalks that will accommodate anybody traveling in any part of the community to get out to Eastern or to get out to 12th Street. So, I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. And this is where I, and probably the rest of the council really depend on, and you can go ahead and have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Depend on our city staff and Elizabeth and her department. So, Elizabeth, based on your recommend, you're recommending approval subject to all of the items that are listed under the recommendation?
Yes, I am. The reason is because it was previously approved for apartments. I believe that this is a significant improvement over the original plan, and because it was previously approved, I do recommend approval.
Okay.
And, and so, to help me understand, we're planning to funnel all the traffic of both apartment complexes west out on one road?
Well, that's the first I've heard of that. We would have to get that approved by the fire marshal. I don't think that would necessarily be allowed by the fire marshal, but I'm happy.
Because you, you have, currently have two entrances from 12th.
From 12th, yes. I, I think it might be important to have at least one entrance on 12th Street remain open.
But you can handle that through the, yeah.
And maybe I missed something, but I feel like it's still not clear because I've got one person telling me they're different property owners, and he's saying they're the same, so. Why are we getting to, am I, am I missing something or am I hearing two different stories?
It's just different company names, you know?
Okay.
The same person can be.
Same person, different identities is a better way to word that.
Right. Different LLCs, yes.
All right. Having heard all of that, do we have a recommendation?
I recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, we've had a recommendation and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Thank you for those who came to speak. Item six is consider approval of FY 2122 contract with Moore Public School District for the provision of seven uniformed school resource officers and one police vehicle for which the city will receive 65% reimbursement to the officer's salary and benefits and 65% of the cost of the vehicle in the total amount not to exceed $384,937.2.
Vice Mayor and Council, this continues to be one of our most advantageous community partnerships, and this is just a standard renewal of our school resource officer contract for the next upcoming school year. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Just one question. Have we ever looked any further into doing anything at the elementary schools within the Moore city limits?
Yes, sir. We actually had discussions about that this year, and we talked with Dustin Horsecott, who's our security director. And this year, they're going to continue to do the roving patrols. They're going to try to institute more roving patrols, but still no full-time officers.
Okay. All right, thanks very much. We had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item seven is consider approval of an annual contract with Norman Regional Hospital Authority doing business as Mstat for the city to provide emergency medical 911 and non-emergency dispatch services. In exchange for said services, Mstat will pay the city approximately $23,422.25 on a calendar quarter, quarter-year basis.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the next year contract or next fiscal year's contract to the contract that was just recently established with Norman Regional Hospital so that we would take over dispatching their ambulance service through our police and fire communication center. Some of the benefits of that that we've already seen is a significant decreased response time for ambulances, which is a great benefit to our community. And both Norman Regional Hospital, the police department, and the communication center, and as I understand from Chief Herbster, everybody's very excited about how this has been working out. And although we had some minor hiccups in the beginning, we've worked it out. This is just the reimbursement contract for the services that we're providing to Norman Regional Hospital. We recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Did we add a dispatcher for, just specifically?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, we get two additional dispatchers down in our communicate, or over in our communication center as part of this contract. That's what the monies are paying for.
Great. All right. What, a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item eight is approve an operational agreement with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office for a multi-jurisdictional special weapons and tactics team.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a continuing partnership. We've always had a good relationship with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office and continue to do so. Our SWAT team is a very effective and highly-trained and operational SWAT team. The sheriff's office recognizes that and needs that assistance. Generally, we would respond to any agency that requests our assistance on a mutual aid agreement, whether it's the sheriff's office, district attorney's office, Norman, or any, any place else. What this does is just makes that relationship on paper and formalizes it in the form of a memorandum of understanding, which we will assist them with special weapons and tactics response in the county. And in return for that, there is reimbursement cost for our services built into the memorandum of understanding, plus the sheriff's office has agreed to assist in making some equipment acquisitions that are very costly but will be very beneficial to not only Cleveland County residents, but the city of Moore as well. Recommend approval.
Okay. Hey, just a couple, I just have a couple of quick questions. Do you know, is it the city of, does the sheriff's office have this agreement with the city of Norman's team, tact team? Do you know?
So, they never had a formalized agreement with the city of Norman. The previous sheriff, I knew him, he had a, he had a deputy assigned to the Norman SWAT team, which gave them that jurisdictional coverage. The sheriff currently does not wish to assign anyone to the Moore SWAT team, although we've extended that opportunity. If he feels he has someone that meets our standards, it's just at this point, he doesn't feel he has a deputy that would, that would rise to that standard. But he was not interested at this time in pursuing a relationship with any other city for those services, and so they no longer have a deputy on that Norman team.
Okay. You know, obviously, you know, you were the sheriff. We have a big county, and you could possibly receive a call maybe 20 miles from here. Do we have, I don't know, I know you could what-if things, but in the event that two instances were to happen while our tact teams deployed, have you considered that? Do we have enough people to, to do two situations if it arose?
Yes, sir. We have contingencies for that now, even today. If we were to have two separate call-outs going at one time, and it would be no different if we were, say, on a mutual aid assistance down in Lexington or Slaughterville or somewhere outside of our jurisdiction. If we had an incident that were to occur in Moore, we would either divert resources as needed to Moore, or we have a great relationship with the Oklahoma Highway Patrol that would have a team that would be willing to respond as well. They are a backup team at this point. We've talked about doing relationships with backup teams in general. It's a good idea to have a backup team. For instance, if you just have one team and you're on a call-out for 12 to 16 hours, you're going to need to rotate your staff out. And so, generally, most agencies have a team that they would call to help rotate them out. And right now, ours is the Oklahoma Highway Patrol.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we have a open invitation to the sheriff's office and they have somebody they feel that could contribute to our team and be a part of that in some way, so. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any other questions? Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Bring us item number nine is consider approval of the planned document and summary plan description setting forth the provisions of the city of Moore and the Moore Public Works Authority Employee Health Benefits Plan, restated effective January 1, 2021, allowing the city to maintain compliance with federal laws and to match the template used by the Assured Benefits Administrator of the city's third-party administrators. Human Resources, go ahead.
Vice Mayor and Council, as you may remember, our third-party administrator for the city's health insurance plan, Freitas Benefits Administrators, has recently joined with Assured Benefit Administrators, also known as ABA. Part of that transition includes a restatement of the planned document to fit ABA's template. Carrie Lunsford and I began working with ABA back in February to ensure that the restatement did not change, add, or delete any benefit already in our planned document. The ABA template does give us more industry-standard language, helps better protect the plan, and includes COVID mandates, HIPAA law requirements, and other updates as required by law. Our health insurance consultants, Gallagher, have also reviewed the restatement of the planned document, and after our internal review and their expert external review, the document is ready for your approval, which staff recommends.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Who was the second? Louis? Okay, we had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item 10 is consider authorizing payment of $35,190.14 to the Oklahoma Municipal League for services fees, for service fees for FY 21, $17,595.7 to be paid July 21, and $17,595.7 to be paid January 2022.
Vice Mayor and Council, the city has been a member of the Oklahoma Municipal League for over 20 years. They represent municipalities of the state capital and provide beneficial training and publications to municipalities. We request your approval to continue our membership in OML for another year.
So, we still feel like we get our monies worth?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay. I would, I would be great if we could ever get somebody to serve on the board for the OML board. If there's any of you that are interested, I know Brooks, we tried that once.
Yeah, we'll just see if there's a, next time an opening comes up, so.
Okay. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item was 11, item 11 is consider approval of FY 2021 budget supplement to budget funds as and related expenses for the 2021B and the 2021C sales tax note, donated funds, and the CARES Act.
Vice Mayor and Council, this budget supplement is for increased funding in several areas. We are requesting permission to increase the budget for the 2021 and 2021C, oh, B and C sales tax note proceeds and the related projects and issuance expenses associated with those notes. We would also request approval to increase the fire department's donation account for donations received from Walmart and Cleveland County to be used for the purchase of stabilization struts for some of our fire equipment. And we would request approval to budget CARES Act funds for the street sweeper, the logic controller for the public safety generator, air purification systems at the fire stations, public safety building, the station, and city hall, along with reimbursing the transportation impact fee for expenses related to the roadwork at Southwest 25th and Telephone Road, as well as expenses related to street clearing during the February winter storm. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item 12 is consider renewal of a contract with, is that right? Item 12, renewal of a contract with Trifecta Communications for video production, beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022.
Vice Mayor and Council, just seeking your approval for a renewal of contract with Trifecta Communications. They provide videography, photography, and just all-around marketing assistance to our department and to our city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb. I'm sorry. Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item 13 is consider renewal of a contract with Dotman Graphic Design, Inc. for website development and website maintenance, beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Again, asking for approval for a renewal of contract with Dotman Graphics. This is our second year, well, actually, he's been on contract with us for many years. This is his second year consecutively for the city's website, and we're merging the Parks and Recreation Central Station website up-
and we're merging the Parks and Recreation Central Station website up under the city's website, so now we have an overarching City of Moore website. And I hope you've been on it lately. I think the functionality, well, I know for a fact the functionality is superior to what it's ever been before. We're very grateful for that. You may not have seen a ton of aesthetic changes yet, but I promise you, the functionality of it is underway, and many departments are using it. Please nod if you, yes, everybody's happy with the website. But it's very easy to use. It's very user-friendly for us on our side. It's a very safe CMS platform that we're using, and it's not exclusive to this developer. So we're not pinned in. If something should happen to this person, many people know Drupal, and somebody could just swoop right in and take over from, and we own all of the content, and we own all of the parts of that. So that's another good piece of that.
You update the site from inside. You have the functionality.
Yes, all the above, yes. Heat updates, we update, yes. And we, we're learning more and more. We're becoming far more comfortable with it. I'm not saying we ever don't want to have somebody on contract or somebody at a moment's notice for some of those big pieces, but I'm really proud of some of the projects that we've been able to launch from the website, and that kind of holds the data very safely and securely. So most, all of our forms, if not by now, will be web-form based, and so people can go on and actually put that information in, and it captures that on the backside, saves that information very securely, and then we can look back on that. So there's no exchanging of emails, and people aren't doing a web, or a fillable form that they have to print off and then send in. Some of those still may have to be that way because they have to be notarized or something to that effect, but again, we're just very excited about what the next year holds for that. Aesthetically and looking at it, I think an interesting part is that close to 80% of our hits have been from mobile devices, and that's completely changed from when we started the website. So now everyone, for the most part, 80%, are accessing our website on their phone. So our website has to look perfect from a phone as well as from a desktop. So sometimes when you get on the desktop, you think, oh, that doesn't look too flashy, or it doesn't have a lot of graphics or zing or bling. The point of that is that it would mess up if that was what you're accessing on your phone, and we know that 80% of our 300,000 people that have accessed it are doing that from their phone. So we have analytics, and we pull that every week, so always happy to share that.
Whenever I get a call and somebody asks me about something, that's the first thing I do is go to the website, and lately, it's, I mean, it's right there, and I'll say, have you checked the website? And I send them the link, so it's.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the work you guys have done on it.
Well, agreed, and again, thanks to you all and staff, too. We've always said that if you, if you're sending somebody there, check first, do your search, and we're continuing to teach that search function, how to search better, faster, quicker, all of those things. But yeah, collectively, I think we've all done a really good job of working with it and hope that it will continue to help us.
Search functionality has a life of its own.
It sure does. Thank you for acknowledging that. But we're trying, and it gets better, and it's learning, it's learning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deidra.
Thank you.
Item 14 is consider approval of a leased to own financing with FIT leasing through advanced exercise and cardio exercise equipment for the station recreation center to be paid monthly for a period of one year, with an option to renew for two additional years.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the leased own financing for the fitness equipment that has already been approved. It's the best financial process that we felt would work for us, for our budget, over a three-year period. We recommend to approve.
So as we go through this, assuming we can, we renew a couple more times, is there opportunity to upgrade that equipment during that time?
That's what we're doing right now. We're upgrading from the original equipment that was when the station opened up. So we're upgrading now, and this makes it a little easier to upgrade as.
So does this just, the lease to own, are we just paying for maintenance then in a contract like that, or will we have incremental upgrades as we go along?
We would have to make the decision to go in and go through another contract.
Pay for new equipment?
Pay for new equipment. Right now, we're paying for what we voted on.
Okay. This is just the way that we're paying for?
It's doing exactly the same way, except this is a three-year instead of a five-year plan, I believe, what it was before.
All right. I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Thank you. Item 15 is consider renewal, number three, for a four-year contract renewal with Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, COPTA, doing business as embarked, to provide non-emergency medical transport services for seniors for the period of July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022, and approve matching funds in the amount of $15,000.
Vice Mayor and Council, this arrangement has worked well for the last couple of years, and so we would like to continue it for another year. Recommend approval.
And just quickly, Brooks, how does that work? Is that, a senior citizen can call and schedule an appointment, or is it?
They schedule appointments, my understanding here.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 16 is consider approval of agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Cleveland County and the City of Moore for reconstruction of Santa Fe Avenue from Southwest 34th Street to Indian Hills Road, and authorized payment of city's share in the amount of $125,000.
Vice Mayor and Council, you previously had identified a funding source of CARES funding to be able to work with the county to reconstruct the Santa Fe Boulevard or Santa Fe Road from 34th Street to Indian Hills. And what this simply does is, is the agreement between us and the county, construction is already started. They've done their stabilization, and if things go well and weather cooperates, they hope to actually have all of the pavement portion of it in by the end of the month. And so what we would ask that you recommend, we recommend approval of the agreement and authorize that you authorize payment of the city's share, which is $125,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 17 is consider acceptance of a quote from Industrial Truck Equipment, ITE, in the amount of $29,925 as the lowest and most reasonable quote for a budgeted refurbishment of a 2012 Terminator sanitation truck.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is for the refurbishment of a 2012 Grapple truck. It is for, excuse me, the lightning loader part of the truck, not the entire truck. So we got some quotes, and this is the lowest and most responsible quote that we got. So we recommend approval.
So you said this is one of our grappler trucks?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 18 is consider authorizing the budgeted refurbishment of a 2015 sanitation route truck. It's unit number 15765. The VIN number is 3BOYPAULZEBERLINCOLN20XRAY9FRANKFRANK269583 from Bridgeport Truck Manufacturing, Inc., in the amount of $50,000 as a sole resource provider.
Vice Mayor and Council, again, this is for refurbishment of the body, not the whole truck. There's the body of the route truck. And again, we went to Bridgeport because they are the original manufacturers of the body of the truck, and so that is why it's a sole source provider. We recommend.
But do we load the truck up and send it to them? They do the work and then send it back?
That is correct.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 19 is consider modifying Article 5, Section 5.1, holidays, and the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual by adding Christmas Eve as a recognized holiday.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a change to our policy and procedures manual, adding Christmas Eve as a recognized holiday to our list of holidays, and we also had to clarify how the holiday will be observed depending on where it falls in during the week. So there was some confusion when I originally wrote that as to how, you know, if it was on a Friday and Christmas was on a Saturday, technically, Christmas would then be recognized on a Friday the same day as the Christmas Eve. So when Christmas Eve is on a Friday, it'll get moved back up to Thursday. Christmas Day would get moved to Friday as the days it'll be recognized, and the same thing for when it falls on Sunday.
Make a motion to approve.
I'm glad to see that. Second.
Very good.
So one question. How many holidays do we observe now?
That is now number 11.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 20 is consider ordinance number 97021, amending Part 9 License and Business Regulations by adding Chapter 15 Home Occupations, Section 9-1501, Purpose and Intent, Section 9-1502, Home Occupations, Sections 9-1503, Actability and Exemptions, and Section 9-1504, Action Regarding Complaints and Violations of Standards, Providing for a Repealer and Providing for Severability.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the ordinance addressing the need for home occupations. I think we addressed this a while back. The community development director and myself, we worked on this. What we did was we took what we thought was the best parts of other ordinances. I kind of did some research on other cities around the area, and then I even expanded to ones some outside the state. We kind of worked together, came up with a set of rules that we think that we could work with. What we have here is, I think, a very good balance between the interest in, you know, an individual supplementing their personal family income from their house, and weighing that with protecting, you know, their neighborhood from potential impacts of that. If there's any questions, Elizabeth is here to help me answer any questions, and I can answer any questions. And I do know that there is somebody that wishes to speak, and I'm not sure if she has signed up, but I do know that there is somebody here that wants to speak on this.
Okay. Well, come on up if you're here and you'd like to speak on this. And again, just state your name and address for our record.
Kristy Cows, 813 Carol M Place. I just wanted to thank you guys because I came from Chicago, and it's not easy to work with the local government there. And you guys have been a pleasure. When I came here, I thought, oh, jeez, I'm just going to have this big battle, and I, and I'm not. And I wanted to thank Brian for the work that he put in, and the people who helped him, so that I can work from home. It's been about a year and a half now, and I'm really looking forward to being able to do this. So I just, I did want to thank you guys for the work that you're doing, and then listening to us, because a lot of people feel unheard. I feel very heard, so thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thanks for our staff for that.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
No. Item 21 is consider ordinance number 97121, amending Part 12, Land Development Code, Chapter 4 Zoning Regulations, Article 1 Definitions, Sections 12-473, words and terms defined by amending the definition of home occupation providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Vice Mayor and Council, what this is doing is simply changing the definition of what we had as a home occupation in our land development code. This was needed because of the changes that we added to the ordinance that was just approved. It just puts us in line with Part 9 of the new code.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 22 is consider resolution number 99321, adopting the schedule of fees and charges effective upon approval of remaining, and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, for repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a change to our fee schedule. Previously, Council was advised that the commercial waste rates had not been changed since 2010, and that, I guess, in several cases, the rates being charged by the city were less than what was being charged to us by our vendor. So what we have done here is we've updated the commercial rate schedule, and we've also indicated in here that these rates will be adjusted each year by whatever the percentage is that is charged by our vendor.
All right, any questions?
So does this one also deal with the other adjustments that were made? This, you're doing it all, so under number seven, delinquent charges?
Yes, that was also removed as well.
Okay. The section right under that says, senior citizens, C Utility, Section 2D? That should be 2E?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And why I caught that, I have no idea.
Me neither, but I did.
You did.
What page is that on?
It is on, I don't know. Oh, 240. Sorry, yeah, 240.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. This time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 23 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held May 17, 2021. Item B is ratify action of city council regarding approval of the planned document and summary plan description setting forth provisions of the City of Moore and Moore Public Works Authority Employee Health Benefits Plan. C, approve and ratify claims expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $1,512,984.19.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 24 is consider approval of FY 2021-2022 annual budget and adopt resolution number 25221.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is just the companion item for the previous budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. We will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item 25 is our consent docket. Item A is accept minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held May 17, 2021. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $458,337.05.
Most approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. We'll now recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting, and let the record reflect that all members who were present are still present. Item 26 is new business. We did have one citizen sign up. Mr. Ronald Samgino?
Samgino.
Okay, excuse me. If you would just state your, come on up, and again, just state your name and your address for the record, and we'll be.
My name is Ronald Samgino. 900 Southwest 38th Street, my address. And I'm here in front of you to bring the discussion of getting more of a discount for a second, second compactor Nine hundred Southwest Thirty-H Street, my address, and I'm here in front of you to bring the discussion of getting more of a discount for a second, second compactor that we're getting, like the poly cart, second poly cart. Before, you know, we were getting this service of the grass clippings for free, okay? Every citizen was getting up to five bags pickup every, you know, every once a week. Now, we got that taken away, okay, since most of us, we, some of us are disabled, like myself, I'm not sixty-five yet to get a discount, I don't know how you guys are doing that, but we cannot afford ten to seven dollars a cart, another cart, when we already paying for the first one. So, that makes the, the bill higher, so we're, I'm in a fixed income myself, fixed income, so social security don't give you raises, not like everybody else gets. So, what I'm trying to do is see if I can get you guys to count down off that, whatever the price is, to at least three fifty, three dollars and fifty cents to make it affordable, since that service, we weren't paying for that before the pandemic, because the pandemic, I guess you guys changed everything to, you didn't want bags anymore on the street, and took away the, the service, and I figured that's what it was because of the pandemic, but I come to find out, it's different, you did away with it. So, now, we are not, since we're in a fixed income like myself, I'm fifty-nine, I have to come up and reach in my pockets and pay more, you know, for services that we didn't have before, so now, I want to make sure that you see what I'm trying to say, that if we can get a more of a discount, I'm not sure how much you guys are charging now, seven dollars?
Seven fifty.
I think seven, seven dollars.
Okay, we can make it more affordable, three fifty, you know, for people with a disability like myself, and the, the, we want all the same outcome. We want to keep the city clean and make sure all the properties look nice, that's what we want to do, but we want to make sure that you guys meet us halfway, to make sure, you know, it's affordable.
We discounted it quite a bit from the original.
Well, I wasn't sure how much it was, I just found out, because I'm.
It's eleven, it's eleven fifty or something like that, and we discounted it down to seven fifty.
Yeah, because we try, we're trying to make sure that we put the bags, you know, but a lot of times, you're, you're going to come back with four or five bags.
Sure.
That was the limit, when you cut your grass, sometimes two, but now they added expense to have another poly cart, so if you guys could, you know, make a lower price to make people with a disability, or even seniors that cannot afford it, make it affordable, that's what I'm trying to see.
Can we have discussion as to?
Sure, happy to look into it.
Yeah.
Happy to have discussion.
Maybe a disability or something.
Sure. Give us the opportunity to look into it.
Yeah, because this is an added expense that we didn't have before.
We get it, I get it.
And a lot of.
And you're not the only person on a fixed income, so.
Hey, we, we want to make it, you know, make sure that it looks nice, the city, so.
No, we appreciate you, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thanks very much. And Brooks, had, had we discussed the possibility of doing a mulch station?
Yeah, and we're still looking into that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a little more challenging than we originally thought.
Yeah, the composter, whatever they got, yeah.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak that did not sign up? All right, items from the city council? And our city manager?
Vice Mayor and Council would just like to thank Finance Director Betty Kane and her staff for all of the hard work they put in on the budget. This budget was certainly more challenging than previous years, and so, kudos to you, Betty.
Yep.
Thank you all. Thank you, Betty.
Thanks.
Yeah, we have a phenomenal city staff. I just, the different things that I do and touch and interact with different people, I'm, I'm always very pleased.
Yes, you guys make us look good, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, you make our job a whole lot easier, so.
All right, thank you, and the next item would be adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.